... of the Fitchburg City Council as a whole committee. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I see there are no members of the public in the audience, so I won't bother to ask about that. At this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent mode. Counselor Schultz, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, in my space of America, and to the Republic of Washington, one nation under God, indivisible, free, and just as for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Schultz?
Here.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Here.
Counselor Walsh?
Here.
President Zarela?
Here.
Counselor Boishman?
Here.
Counselor Kuchar?
Here.
Counselor Cragan?
Here.
Counselor Cruz?
Here remotely.
Counselor Deanna Tally?
Here.
Counselor Fleming?
Here.
Counselor Green?
Here.
We have 11 members present.
Thank you very much. As the emailed and posted agendas have indicated, tonight we will be discussing the Police Department, Fire Department, DPW, and our three enterprise funds, or Airport isn't technically an enterprise fund, but the water, wastewater, and airport budgets. Before we begin, I would just like to give my now customary reminder to my colleagues that tonight will be solely for questions about budget line items. I have asked the department heads to be present. I have given them my word that they are not going to be subject to open-ended grilling about departmental operations. Only what actually appears in the budget. Anything else can come at another time. Furthermore, there will be no debate, discussion, rhetorical questions, et cetera, this evening. This is an informational meeting only. Debate, discussion, rhetorical questions, statements, et cetera, will all come next Thursday when cuts are proposed. Thank you for your cooperation as we try to move this along in an efficient manner. And I'd also like to thank all the department heads who have agreed to be here this evening and who have already been waiting a while, unfortunately, through no one's fault, but still, I appreciate your patience. And with that said, I will... Oh, the one other thing is unless anyone on the council has an objection, because things have run longer than I expected already, and because the major public safety department budgets are likely to occupy the bulk of our time this evening, I would like to... Also, if the finance team is amenable, of course, move the airport budget to the top of the list so that we don't keep poor Peter Kettle sitting here for three hours to give a 20-minute presentation.
Twenty minutes. Try two hours and 20 minutes. No, I'm joking.
All right, and with that, I will happily turn it over to the finance team and the mayor.
Thank you, President Zarela, and thank you, counselors. I would like to just start by introducing our finance team that have been working very hard on this budget for many, many hours. We have our treasurer and tax collector in her final appearance on the finance team, We have our auditor in her premiere, in her premiere appearance, Jaclyn Cronin. We have our assessor, Chris Pecat.
If you've been here before, you'll be here again.
We have Deputy Chief of Staff, Miles Phillips Wilcox. And myself, Mayor Squalia. So I'll introduce the budget. Oh, thank you. I'll introduce the budget. I'm honored to present the official fiscal year 2025 budget for the city of Fitchburg, which breaks down as follows. The general fund: $169,788,795. Water enterprise: $8,396,998. Wastewater enterprise: $17,655,832. The airport enterprise: $1,084,715. This budget reflects our collective commitment to addressing the financial challenges that lie ahead while continuing to provide essential services for our community. We are facing significant fiscal pressure through FY '25, '26, and FY '27 due to upcoming obligations that have been made and our upcoming schedule of debt payments. The projects that we have borrowed for and the competitive contracts that we have awarded have stretched our financial resources thin. Over the past few years, we have relied on free cash to balance our budget and have pushed revenue estimates higher without corresponding measures to increase needed revenue to balance these actions. Additionally, we are seeing unprecedented increases in healthcare and school transportation costs. Despite these challenges, our finance team worked collaboratively and with our department heads and city staff to deliver a balanced budget for FY '25 that does not cut existing staff and meets Fitchburg's current needs. Our goal is to ensure financial sustainability into the future years while continuing to provide the high-quality services our residents deserve. Future fiscal year planning will begin immediately following this budget, where we'll be actively identifying efficiencies, reviewing programs and staffing levels, and prioritizing our city's comprehensive safety, educational, and infrastructure needs. This budget is not just a financial document, it is a plan for our city's future, reflecting our collaborative efforts to provide for our communities' encompassing critical needs while ensuring we maintain fiscally responsible budget management for our taxpayers. Feel free to schedule an appointment with our department heads for any questions or concerns, or contact the mayor's office anytime. Thank you. And now Jaclyn Cronin, our auditor.
I'm next. Okay, good evening, President Zarela and city counselors. There will be much discussion over the next several days on many aspects of the city of Fitchburg finances. Before we begin, I want to acknowledge and thank the mayor and all my city colleagues whose teamwork has made possible the balanced budget before you. I believe that the leadership of city department heads and the commitment of city staff constitute the city's most valuable asset. The budget package before you honors all existing city obligations and delivers essential services despite significant reductions in departmental spending. General fund resources, however, are insufficient to support this level of ongoing commitment. Fortunately for fiscal 2025, one-time funding sources were on hand, combined with departmental reductions, to meet the moment. Once the budget is approved, the work will begin to identify sustainable policy and structural changes for fiscal 2026 and beyond. The city has accomplished a lot in the past several years, and as Auditor Brooks stated last year at this time, now is the time to take a pause and to reassert a frugal mindset that examines every penny spent and searches for additional revenue sources that city residents and taxpayers can afford. So I'll just take a few minutes tonight to do an overview of the revenue and expenditures, and then we'll pass it on to the departments, if I may. Okay, so I'll begin with a look at the revenues. The delivery of city services, coupled with capital projects, pension, and an alarming spike in health insurance costs, have outpaced the general fund's ability to generate adequate revenue. If you would kindly turn to the tax levy on page four of the budget. The tax rate setting process starts with the two-and-a-half percentage growth, and to that we add new growth, which we're estimating this year at $1 million, which approximates last year's figure. The final number will be certified sometime before September 1st. Down to reserve for abatements, that's also known as the overlay, that amount has been steady for several decades at $950,000. Next is the cherry sheet, all the state aid. So these estimates are in keeping with the governor's proposal as it stands right now and will be finalized in the coming months by the legislature in the near future. The Chapter 70 award is about $1 million less than the required net school spending increase that we have, but we'll be able to close that gap within direct costs. So it approximates the state's expectation from us for spending. If you go down to unrestricted general government aid, that shows a 3% increase to $10 million, and that's in keeping with the state's commitment to all cities and towns this year. They had a target of 3%. Turning to page five, the remaining list here are just typical receipts, and of course, the veterans, that represents 75% reimbursement of prior-year costs. That's typical. The assessments are pretty much in line with past years. So if you turn to page five. So local receipts on page five here is where the city has reached a ceiling. As you can see, the estimates are virtually level with the prior year. Current year receipts were reviewed through the month of April and did not show any significant sustainable increases over the fiscal '24 estimates. Ideally, revenue estimates would be much more conservative, but have been pushed to the limit to meet spending obligations. In summary, of the total 9.9 million increase in revenues on page five from fiscal '24 to fiscal '25, 4.4 million of that is not renewable. The final line item of available fund transfers consists of one-time resources, and it will take several years to restore estimated local receipts to a healthier position. And if you'd kindly turn to expenditures on page six. During the budget-setting process, it was clear that this year would not be business as usual with the typical challenges. Between local receipts hitting the ceiling and the unprecedented increase in health trust fund contributions, the fiscal '25 challenge called for extraordinary measures. One of those measures is the currently active negotiations with the PEC on health insurance, plan design, or contribution changes, which, if successful, could yield immediate savings in the health insurance budget. Also, as discussed, vacant positions were not filled, and departments were asked to resubmit their budgets with parameters that called for substantial reductions, and the departments rose to the challenge. The amounts you see in the column labeled fiscal year '25 requested are substantially reduced and will likely put a strain on each department's ability to provide city services. As with the one-time revenues on page four, this is not a sustainable model in the long term. Finally, I want to note that before the tax rate is set in the fall, there may be an opportunity to submit a supplemental budget or to adjust certain accounts that we find here that need correction or to address other specific departmental needs. So the story continues after tonight. And before we proceed to the presentation of each departmental budget, I'd just like to acknowledge my colleague, Anne Cervantes, and wish her well with her retirement.
Thank you.
And thank her for her seven years of service to the city. Thank you.
I'm gonna miss her.
And we'll turn it over to Police Chief?
Oh, the airport? Did you want to start with the airport?
Before we move to the individual departments, do any counselors have questions specifically about revenues? I would ask that we not ask any questions about the expenditure summary, because we'll get to that as each department comes up. Questions about revenues? All right. In that case, yes. If we could move on to the airport, that would be excellent.
Okay. So the airport budget for fiscal '25. The first line item is probably the keynote of the year. Our department head, Mr. Kettle, has announced his retirement, and unfortunately, the city would be losing him probably halfway through the year. He's agreed to continue as the airport manager through December, and because of that, an additional appropriation may be needed later on in the year to supplement this department head line item in the event of an overlap for training on the job. The administrative assistant is also retiring in the near future, so the projected salary line item has been lowered a bit to recognize that there will be a new person coming in. So if we look onto the line person, 24 hours, there was an overtime spike because of... Oh, I'm sorry, the overtime line item. There was a spike in overtime this year because of the liflight. When they're refueling, they call in someone to attend to the fuel pumps, and so there's a spike in the overtime here. However, that is charged back to liflight, and the airport receives $180,000 an hour for each of those call-ins. So although there is a spike here, on the flip side, there's a revenue recognition for that cost. And down in the airport expenses line, the airport reimburses the city for city-related costs. That $50,000 has pretty much been consistent since I've been here. They missed one year where they had a hardship, but that's been restored. And the other major line item is aviation fuel, which Mr. Kettle did lower. We did ask that the airport look at their budget and see if there were any savings there, so he did lower that, and it is in line pretty much with past years. So that's really all I have, unless you have questions for...
Questions on the airport budget. Counselor Boishman.
Reimbursement to the city? You're saying that they're paying us every year $50,000?
Yes. With the exception of fiscal '23, they had a hardship that year.
Just '23? Because I was under the impression that in prior to that, too, when they were building the... What do you call the hangar? Not the hangar, the new...
Administration building?
Yeah.
It's possible. I can look back, and there have been years where we've actually had to appropriate money, you know, for them to meet some of their budgetary needs as well.
Yeah, but they are paying us.
Yes, it's charged to them, yes.
Thank you, Peter. And you say he's leaving when? December of this year?
December 31st. December 31st.
December 31st.
All right. And the assistants leaving when?
I think July 26th.
I will have to talk to the council...
July 26th.
I'll have to talk to you after on some of this other stuff.
All right. All set?
I'm all set. I yield the floor.
Vice President Van Hazinga?
Thank you, Mr. President. So one of the investments we've made in the airport in recent years is to expand the self-service fueling capacity. So I'm just looking at the budget of the mouse. It looks like we're budgeting income of about $670,000, which looks just a little conservative to be safe. And then the expenses for fuel are looking at about $477,000. So it looks like we're just comparing the price of fuel versus selling the fuel or making about $200,000 to support the airport, help make it self-sustaining. Is that an accurate representation, Mr. Kettle?
We actually made more money than what's shown on the budget. And basically, if I could just show it back a little bit, if I may, since I started on the job in 2020, we've almost doubled the revenues. We're now up to over a million. In 2020, it was about $500,000. The fuel capacity hasn't come up again. If we look at the end of this year...
I'm sorry, can I ask you to come up to the table?
President Zarela. City counselors, thank you for the opportunity to talk. I'm just going to take you back to 2020. If you look at the revenues earned in 2020, it was just over $500,000. This year, we project just over a million, so we've almost doubled the revenues coming in. The biggest problem with identifying fuel sales is the fuel price is changing all the time. We don't know what jets are coming in. So when you do the budget, it's not scientific, it's more of a gut feel, and I think I've got a pretty good handle on the gut feel of it now, and hopefully, the new manager, when he takes over, will have the same. So if you look at the revenues that earned, I don't know if I've just said this, maybe from the back, but if you look at the revenues at the end of April, the revenues at the end of April on the last budget were $808,000. Our expenditure was $800,000, so we're in the plus. And just prior to that, we'd taken two large fuel sales as well, sorry, two large fuel orders. So this is all money in the kitty, in the fuel tanks. So I project quite a significant improvement by the end of next year on fuel sales and the revenue compared to the expenditures.
So it looks like, really, our goal for the airport is for it to be self-sustaining.
Absolutely.
Supporting itself, and it looks like the principal revenue sources are the rents of the property with the hangars. We recently repaired some hangars and built new hangars?
Oh, yes. No, repaired.
Repaired, and we have a new arrangement with liflight, so we're growing there. We invest in our ability to sell fuel, so this will help the long-term sustainability of the...
Definitely. One of the things that I didn't build into the budget was the RFEI. We have a team of people on the actual, in the city, that are developing a project, the RFEI request for...
Expression of interest.
Expression of interest, thank you. We didn't get much of a response to that, so it's been withdrawn, and it's going to go out to a broader band now to get to large companies that could come to Fitchburg that don't even know Fitchburg exists, in all honesty. And the other good news is that I've been talking to a local guy that wants to develop some hangar, hangars down at the airport, and that's from the RFP. And I spoke to him tonight, and it looks like the price of a new hangar at the airport could be around about $110,000, which people will buy. New hangars that are being developed at Lawrence are $325,000. That's the difference. There's not one week goes by that I don't get a telephone call asking me, "Do you have hangar space? We want to come to Fitchburg." So I just see the airport doing this over the future.
For the most part, with the hangars, we're leasing the ground itself, and other developers are actually...
Exactly.
Spending the capital to build the hangar.
Exactly.
Maintaining them. So we're generating revenue, minimizing our exposure with expense.
Yes, we are. But the good thing is that this developer also has the experience to put in utilities with Unitil and also water and whatever we need, and that's included in the price. He will bring the utilities to the airport so we don't have to get $1.8 million from the city council to put the utilities in.
And if we're leasing the ground for development, Mr. Pecat, is it correct that we're collecting property taxes on the structures themselves?
Correct. They are taxed as hangar condos.
Great. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
Under the airport rents, are we, are all the tenants down there current on their rents?
Yes and no. I have one little bit of a problem that I've been promised payment by the end of this month. It's around about $6,000, and I know I'll get it, because otherwise, I'll take the hangar away, so...
Okay. Thank you, and thanks for doing such a great job down at the airport. It's a value now, not a drain on us. It's an asset to us, it always has been, but now it's becoming profitable, so I'm sad to see you go.
Thank you.
Counselor Deanna Tally? How were the projected FY '24 numbers calculated?
Which one?
All of them. The total.
Okay. Basically, the initial startup that I use is a CPI for the year coming up. That goes into the first one. I base it on the month where we're doing it. I divide it by the month into the year, and then multiply that, just the way I've always done a budget in the private sector.
So you do the projection for FY '24?
Yes, sir.
The projected number of 1136100 would indicate a monthly average revenue intake of $95,000 a month, and right now, per the StatisC report, through April, we're doing $81,000 a month for a total revenue forecasted for the year of $575,000 if you prorate those 10 months averaged through 12. So how are we getting 1.136 million when the average is over 10 of 12 months is going to 975? What's going up significantly in May and June?
If you look at, as I just said, if you look at April, the end of April, on what I got on the budget, the revenue was $808 million, sorry, beg your pardon, 800...
812.
812, right, and the actual expenses were 800. So we're $12,000 up, okay? And using that basis, by the end of the year, the whole thing's based on fuel sales, as you know, and fuel purchases, and I put a little bit of gravy in there on the fuel because I could take it away, because if I don't buy it, I don't use it. So that equals itself out, and that's how I came up with the figure.
Okay, I just, if you take a 12 divided by 10 and then times it by 12, you come to 975.
Yes.
Not 1.136 million.
Okay.
So unless something is going to be astronomically higher than the last 10 months, or I'm having difficulty reconciling the projection?
No, I don't think you're having difficulty in reconciling it, in all honesty. Yeah, please, Jacquet.
So with the airport budget, usually the thing to look at is the relationship between the airport fuels line and the fuel expense line. So as long as that delta is consistent, the net effect is okay. So if the $729,000 of projected fuel was high, so was the $465,000 of projected fuel expense. So there's usually a relationship between those two numbers.
As I said, it's not scientific, it's more of a gut feel, and I think we're on track.
Understood. I'm just saying...
You're just querying where the $1 million came from.
See, this is what I do for a living.
I know.
And this is saying $300,000 more in expenses and revenues versus what's really going to happen. So when was this data grabbed?
These were all submitted in, this was, these were all submitted in February, at the beginning of the budget process, when we met with the department heads.
Based on the previous years.
I'll have to go back and calculate what the total was through February to see if that, I come to that number.
Well, you will do, because that's the figures that I used.
I'll verify it.
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not going, I'm a stickler for accuracy because of my profession, and I'm not criticizing. I'm saying...
Understand.
What I'm seeing is not reflected in here. I'm getting a different story here. So I'll have to go back to when, so were the projections all made through February activity for this whole package? Were the projections based on...
Yes, they were.
... February for all departments?
When budget requests go out, they're asked to project the fiscal '24 numbers at that time. We do not continue to circle back and refine them.
Okay, so all these projections are through February actuals?
They're, well, these were probably submitted to us in February, so maybe they're January actuals?
January actuals.
Starts earlier in the year.
Okay, seven months of the 12. Okay, thank you. All set, Counselor? Counselor Fleming?
Yeah, my question isn't quite so complex. I'm just going through all the categories here, and this one stood out to me, catering. What is, what are we catering down there?
I don't think there's anything down there for it, is there?
There's $600 here for catering.
How many?
$600.
$600. Well, we actually have aircraft coming in, and we put, I put that into the budget because we will go out and we will get food for the plane that's coming in so that the captain and his crew can eat.
Okay.
And then it actually goes back into the budget.
All right, it just sort of stood out to me where everything was so technical, and then we had catering.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Cragan?
Hi there. I just, I had a really quick question about, I remember in fiscal year 2022, the events number was really high, but that the FAA makes it difficult for the airport to put on events, to have that be a source of revenue if it's not directly related to aviation. on events, to have that be a source of revenue if it's not directly related to aviation. Is that correct?
That's absolutely true. In that year, we had the Brazilian top singer come in, and we also had three rodeos, and that brought the airport $50,000.
Yep.
And the following year, I got note from the FAA that we are not a concert area. We're an airport. You can't do it anymore. So at that time, I said, "Well, okay, where do I get this revenue from?" And they said, "You've got to land, a lot of land. Put it out. Do the RFEI. Do the RFP." And at that time, we had no automatic landing system.
Right.
So we had to speak to Devens and get clearance to go through the restricted area, which we got. And also talking with the FAA, we developed a special landing system just for Pittsburgh. And that's there now, so people can fly into the airport in inclement weather. And on top of that, as the city council knows, by the end of June of this year, we're actually grooving the runway to make it safer for the planes to come in, the jets to come in, again, in wet weather. So the grooving totally enhances the friction on the runway, and they can stop without crashing. So it's making the airport a much better place for the bigger aircraft to come in. The largest one we had come in was a Global Air 7500 with a wingspan of 104 feet. The wings were over the runway. It was enormous, and he took 1,000 gallons of fuel and took off. 1,000 gallons of fuel today, $6,000.
So I bring this up just to say that the innovation that I've seen at the airport has been remarkable and consistent, and very much a case of making lemonade out of lemons every time. However, I did, I had a quick follow-up, if that's okay, which is, is your airport commission, is your board fully, do you have the, do you have enough members right now? Just again, for any members of the public who are watching, because it's a fascinating board, and you make very big decisions.
It is full now.
It is full now.
Yes.
Glad to hear it. Thanks.
With the exception of one position. Because I might go back onto the commission when I leave the airport as the manager.
I hope you do.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just, just because it was brought up, that catering line item, does that cover, like, also the snacks in the break room that I remember seeing when I took the tour?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, there's a very nice, small, but nice break room in the airport for incoming and outgoing pilots and crew to use and so forth. All right. Any further questions on the airport budget? All right. I would just like to briefly crave the indulgence of my fellow counselors to break my own rule, just to say, thank you, Mr. Kettle. Your service has been extraordinary. It's very much appreciated, and it will be missed.
Thank you very much. It's been my honor to help the city. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, he also says he's going to miss me, too.
Of course. Of course he will.
Thank you, counselors. So next in the lineup is the police budget. And at the request of Chief Martino, who will also be retiring shortly, he has requested that he present his police budget.
Absolutely.
I'd just like to say a few words prior to that regarding the police budget, as I've been the one presenting it the last several years. This year's budget presented some challenges requiring department heads to dig deep in rethinking their budgets. And I'd like to thank Chief Martino for his efforts. The chief's initial budget requests were over $10.5 million in the first version, which is reflected in the supplemental that came out earlier this week. And when asked to trim, Chief Martino did an exceptional job. So I'm privileged to introduce Chief Martino to present the FY '25 Police Department budget.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Chris. Welcome, chief.
Thank you. Well, it's truly an honor to be presenting my 10th and my final budget to the City of Pittsburgh for the Pittsburgh Police Department. To say that this one wasn't a challenge is an understatement. That this is, I guess we save the best for last, for lack of better terms. You know, we had a lot of challenges right from the very beginning, as Chris stated. When I first got together with my team, and let me back up, let me, I'm accompanied tonight by Captain Chris Garcia. I take a collaborative approach at the police department on my budget. I utilize my administrators to the best of my ability. We do everything together as a team, between Captain Garcia, Jeanine, and Lemay, and I will be remiss to not mention Karen Cordio, my clerk. It's truly a team effort when we're trying to put together a $10.5 million budget, and their value is extremely important to me. So I just wanted to recognize the captain who was here this evening. As I started the state, we started out in February, and we put together what I thought was going to be an operating budget for the City of Pittsburgh for our police department. And the number we came up at that time was almost $10.6 million, 10.5550, roughly in that dollar figure. That wasn't adding any personnel. I've come before this council many times. I've told you the number of police officers that I think I need to run this city in an efficient manner, but that 10.5 did not include any more police officers. It included some capital things that I believe were needed. It included some additional money and training, but that was the number that we came up back originally in February. So fast forward, I submit the budget, and we're realizing things are going to change drastically. I was notified that I had to go back to my FY '24 budget, that I had to level fund it, and I had to cut 3%. To say the least, that was going to be a challenge. I wanted to be sitting here tonight to present to you, counselors, and to present to the mayor, an operating budget that was realistic, but more importantly, that was sustainable. The last thing you want is a department head in front of the council and the finance team in August saying that I'm out of money. So it was extremely important to me, especially this being my last year, and I'm passing this off to hopefully someone within my department, that I provide that type of sustainable budget, that realistic budget. You know, make no mistake about it, I got to put gas in my vehicles, I got to turn the lights on with my electricity, and I got to heat the building. I had to sustain this budget. The only way that I could do that was unfortunately, was to eliminate some unfilled positions. You know the challenges I've had over the last several years trying to get up to staffing. You know, we've been at 83 police officers for the last three years. A couple of years ago, I lost two dispatches, 12 to 10. We've been slightly going backwards. Well, I still had some vacancies. And it's never easy to eliminate positions, but it's a lot easier to eliminate positions that doesn't have a name attached to it. It saddened me, because I worked hard to get to this number in 10 years, and to be going backwards in my last year was a little disheartening, but it was what was needed in order for me to present to you a sustainable, realistic budget. And working with my team and working together collaboratively with the mayor's office and the finance team, I think that's exactly what we did this evening. So as you can see, and I'm just going to highlight some of the bigger things in the budget, there's a lot in here, and you know, obviously, I'm sure you're going to have some questions. Right out of the gate, I had two police officer positions that were not going to be filled. I was going from 83 positions to 81 positions for police officers. I had an open clerk's position. We're not able to fill that clerk's position, so we will operate with one clerk. I still have a couple of part-time. We will tighten the belt, and we will weather the storm when it comes to that. Dispatches have always been a challenge. Two years ago, Arteta Brooks and I and Chris, we decided we had to go from 12 to 10. I've been at 10 dispatches, which is reflective in my overtime. We're going to stay at 10. We're just going to have to move some things around and just be a little bit more frugal in our dispatch center. I'm going to just start going through the different pages in my budgets just to highlight a few things. You're going to see a reduction in overtime from 5:20, excuse me, I originally requested 8:50. I reduced that down to 5:20. You're probably wondering, "How is that sustainable?" Overtime is something that I look at weekly, and I try to project forward. This evening, I went in front of finance to move another $30,000 to my overtime account. That will sustain me the rest of this year. With the addition of that $30,000, that will bring my overtime for this fiscal '24 year to about $780,000. Now, I know Counselor Tina Tally's probably doing his math in his head, how is 780 going to be reflected to 520, and how is that going to be sustainable? So we've been issued an order to tighten our belts, to control overtime spending to only emergency situations. For the last month, we've been doing just that. I eliminated all overtime. That wasn't considered or deemed an emergency. My, right now, my current overtime expenditures under these new rules is about $15,000 to $17,000 per payroll. If you do that, times 26 payrolls, you're going to see that somewhere in the vicinity between 520 and 560 next year, if we continue in this fashion with our belts tight and saying, "Hey, we got to watch overtime." The other money you see in overtime that we spent above and beyond this year was the money that we had to pay out for compensatory time buybacks. I've spoken to the council on several occasions about the value of compensatory time. With the help of Ms. Davis in HR and during contract negotiations, we were able to reduce our compensatory time overhead from 480 hours all the way down to 240 hours. With that reduction came a lot of buybacks. This past year, we did approximately $250,000 in buybacks for compensatory time because of that reduction from 480 to 240. Thus, that is the extra money that is in the 780 this year. So I hope that gives you a little bit of understanding of the overtime. You know, I firmly believe that our department, if we control it and scrutinize it, we're going to be in that 520 to $600,000 next year. I can't tell you what emergencies are going to happen. We have presidential election. There's going to be a lot of things happening this year, but I feel pretty confident that if I do, or if my predecessor has to come to council, it will be minimal when it comes to overtime. The other areas we cut from was the personnel. I did cut back a little bit on dispatch overtime. I'm happy to say that Captain Jeanine has done a fabulous job. We just hired two more, and once they're out of training, we're going to be at 10. That's not my precise number that I like to be at, but I think we will be able to sustain it, as long as I can keep those 10 dispatches working. So I did cut a little bit from my dispatch overtime. Quite frankly, the rest of the budget, I was just borrowing a little bit here and borrowing a little bit there, so I can make up that 3% that was requested that we reduce. You can look at my last two pages of this budget. I was taking $1,500 from one account, 500 from another, really trying to make it realistic. You can look at my gas and oil. You look at my auto repair. Those are realistic numbers. That's what the police department's going to spend next year. So unfortunately, our budget went backwards. We had to make some hard choices, that we weren't able to fill some positions. But I know when I pass the torch next February, when I reach my 10th anniversary as police chief, I'm going to turn over a department that the next chief can have sustainability through FY '25. That was important to me, that I was able to pass this off to the next chief that's going to have a sustainable budget. And I think that's what this reflects here this evening. It's been truly a pleasure and an honor. I thank the council, I thank the finance team for giving me this opportunity tonight, just to sit here and talk about my budget. And I would be happy to answer any questions on any line in this budget.
Counselor Brochman.
You and I talked numerous times over the course of the year, and my big pecked teeth is regional dispatch. And you told me to hold off a year ago, that you were working on a plan. Are we near the plan that you were working on? You didn't go into detail, but I feel wholeheartedly that I think the community would be better off with a regional dispatch center.
Counselor. Remember, no debate and discussion. You can ask your question.
May I answer that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So the simple answer is yes. Myself and my team did an exorbitant amount of research and looking into regionalizing. We spent a year and a half. There's 13 regional centers in the state of Massachusetts. There's not a lot of regional centers that are out there. Most of those regional centers incorporate small towns. The closest one to us is Neshova, which is located in Devens. I went to several meetings. I met with the director at Neshova. The police chiefs were excited to have Pittsburgh join Neshova. Unfortunately, I had to get 100% approval from those towns' managers to allow Pittsburgh to join that dispatch. That dispatch does about 60,000 calls per year for service. I was bringing in another 60,000. We were going to overload it, and the towns that are currently there felt that the overload wasn't worth the effort. So Neshova came and it went. There's not a lot of other options. Dispatch has become a profession in itself. I firmly believe what we have right now does work. It's not what I would choose if I had a regional option, but I think having it in my police station, my civilian dispatches, working those 911 lines, sending stuff over to the fire department on emergency medical dispatch, it's worked for 15 years. We have to do some tweaking, but I did promise this council that I would research it, and I spent a good year and a half. And unfortunately, Pittsburgh is just a little bit too big, and to bring that type of call volume to a regional center was not an option. So here I am, you know, and we're going to continue in this operating budget as long as this passes and moves forward. And you can see the money that I'm getting back from state 911. That continues to increase. You take away that $219,000, that's a lot of money. One of the things you need to know about regionalization, counselor, is if we move towards regionalization, my dispatches, they're not only dispatches, but they're greeters, and they do other duties at the station. My dispatches disappear, I'm going to need more police officers just to be taking up those extra duties. You do that math, and it just doesn't correlate to this is the way we want to go. So I know I spoke for a while. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, you did. Now, my next question on page 24, gas and oil. We spend approximately $105,000 on gas. Am I right or wrong? Now, I was talking to Nick Harrison earlier, and I was talking to, and I was doing the numbers. We spend pretty close, according to the numbers on here that I read. We spend as a city pretty close to half, over half a million dollars on gas. And I really believe that we ought to look into the possibility of having a tank where we can save money. And if somebody's stealing...
Counselor. Again, we're not proposing new ideas tonight, just asking questions about what's there.
I just tried to help him, that $105,000 is a lot of money, and Nick Harrison's $200,000.
Is there a question, counselor?
My question was, we ought to think about it.
Okay. We'll take that as rhetorical and move on.
105 is how we're estimating gasoline consumption, based on our past consumption, and it's based on current market rate of gasoline consumption. We track every gallon that comes through the City of Pittsburgh to us, our department. We audit our monthly gas allowances. I know exactly how many gallons every officer puts in that cruiser monthly. 105 is a lot, but when you're driving 50 vehicles 24 hours a day, seven days a week, yeah, the gas cards are used quite frequently. I'm confident 105 is sustainable.
All right. Counselor Van Helsing.
Thank you. So one of the initiatives the department undertook the last year was instituting a body camera policy. And one of the ongoing costs with that program is the data retention and management. Is that something that's included in your budget, or is that shifted over to IT?
It was always an IT function. Data management, storage, cloud storage, that's, you're going to see within Trevor's budget. Just to give a shout out to the body camera program, it's been an exceptional program for this past year. It's really brought our police department to the next level in transparency and accountability. So every penny we spend on IT is well worth it. So, you know, I would hope that the council looks at that when you're reviewing Trevor's budget.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Fleming.
Yeah, so mine's sort of a multi-question on the same item. On the training recruit, I see we deducted everything. How many, how many officers, how many recruits were sent to the academy with 35,200?
It's roughly $4,000 a recruit that we paid the state, the MPTC, to train. In FY '25, I'm anticipating four retirements, to include myself. Three others are slated to retire. So as you can see in this budget, there's nothing there. So you're probably asking, "How are we going to train four recruits if there's nothing there?" I have a police officer that's retiring on June 30. We won't be filling his position, so the money that I, we won't be filling his position immediately. It will stay unfilled until January, and that savings will help pay for the police officers to go to the academy in January. But I have to pay the municipal police training council four thousand dollars per student officer for that twenty-four weeks of training.
Okay, so if we, so that's where we're going from our sixty-four to sixty-two, and then we're going to, our police department's going to be reduced even further because you have officers that are retiring, this, that, and the other thing. So, is that something, just, is that something that when we try to fill those positions, you'll have to come back to ask for that money, or will they remain empty for the next year?
No, those four positions that are slated to retire are funded in this budget.
Okay.
They're funded in this budget. Because of the infrequency of academies, I would anticipate Captain Jeanine identifying four candidates, and we will be sending them to an academy probably the first week of February of next year. So, we'll start recruiting and getting names sometime around October. So, there'd be a little bit of a cost savings. That cost savings will be able to transfer within the budget to help pay the cost of the academy.
You answered all my questions, thank you.
Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Chief Martino, for your diligence on this budget and budgets. You've clearly had a very challenging year this year to address. And you brought, answered a lot of my questions already, because I did flag that, that big step down in overtime, the three-hundred-and-thirty thousand. Just one final question, what sort of tactics are being used to, to bring that down specifically and to keep that sustainability, month to month?
Are you speaking specifically overtime, sir?
Yes, Chief Martino.
Okay. In front of me, which you can't see, this is my overtime report that I get from my payroll clerk every two weeks. This is what we scrutinize. There's certain things that just I have no control over. Those are court appearances, emergency situations, when officers are out sick, that I have, I have a minimum staffing on my shifts. Those are, those are the things that really I don't have a control over. That's that five-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. What goes above and beyond that, now, we get into the training aspect of it. Several years ago, maybe ten years ago, we took on the effort of doing all of our training ourself, because I always, I was a believer that when you're promoting trainers within the department, and those trainers are training your own, you get a better quality. Our officers are more inept to take part in training when you're in that familiar setting. That type of training equates to dollars. That may be an area, and I've had this discussion with the captains, that when they're formulating their FY twenty-six budget, that may be something that you have to take a look at. I would hate to go backwards in that aspect, but that's one of those options, if we had to, we could. I think it's going to result in not as great a training, but that's one of the things that we've identified anticipating, as you heard the mayor, this is not only FY twenty-five, this could be twenty-six and twenty-seven. So, as we put this together, counselor, not only was I forecasting twenty-five, I was forecasting twenty-six and twenty-seven because I don't want to do that to my predecessor, giving them a budget that is not sustainable. So, something we're constantly looking at, sir, I'm glad you brought the question up, but I think I'm in that sweet spot when it comes to overtime. And I'd just like to make one point, and it's something I'm very proud of. Our overtime budget has fluctuated between five and, say, eight-hundred thousand dollars. If I brought in statistics from cities across the Commonwealth, our size and what they spend, some of them that are close to our location, their overtime budgets are in the millions. We've done things contractually, working with Ms. Davis, the things that we take, taken steps on, the collective bargaining agreement has helped to reduce overtime costs. So, I'm very proud of the fact that we have taken those steps, and I'm proud to say that our department operates much more efficiently on overtime expenditures than some of the other ones comparable to our size in the Commonwealth.
Thank you, chief. Would you say that there's some scrutiny as to officers sort of picking up shifts that might bring them more overtime versus for non-emergencies, maybe just take, can you pick up my Friday, can you pick up my, what, my seven-to-eleven, or whatever it may be? Are things like that scrutinized?
That doesn't happen as much as you would think or indicate. We do have a considerable amount of overtime that goes out weekly that is all grant-funded. You're all well aware of the amount of money that Ms. Fitcher brings into the police department. We have several directed patrols that are all overtime-based throughout the year, hundreds of thousands of dollars that are not even reflected in this. We spend countless hours on the rail trail patrolling that, countless hours in our hotspot areas through CDBG funding. The amount of money that we use that we solicit on grants on overtime is substantial.
Thank you, chief, that's good to hear. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Counselor Walsh.
Thank you. Amazingly enough, that was my comment and a question. I'm looking through and I'm seeing about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, roughly four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in grants that you've obtained over the last year. And I was just wondering if you foresee that number being consistent in coming years?
I not only see it consistent, I see it growing. Christie has really come into her own as a grant writer. She's presenting at a conference in next month as one of the premier grant writer analysis in the Commonwealth. City of Pittsburgh is very fortunate to have this talented woman. So, I would say not only is it sustainable, I would say it's probably, we're going to exceed those expectations. My captains understand the benefit of these grants. You know, I'll use one, for instance, the KOPSI grant we hired the clinician on. That's a half-million-dollar grant, and the services we're providing are exceptional. So, long story to your, to your answer is, yes, it's sustainable. I expect it's only going to grow.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you. I just have one question myself, actually. I was going to ask for some clarity on the civilian dispatch uniforms in general, because I had an inaccurate picture of, you know, what the dispatchers do, but you answered that in passing in response to another question. I was just curious what's driving the one-hundred percent increase in the civilian dispatch uniforms this year?
Turnover. We provide them with uniforms. We're not going to tell when someone leaves to leave their uniform.
Makes perfect sense to me.
Yeah, so turnover is a big part of it. You know, we're going to be entering into collective bargaining talks very shortly with our dispatches, but I think the turnover is the biggest thing. Uniform and appearance is very important to me, much like our cruisers. I want my dispatches looking the role when someone comes in the PD. So, you know, it's very important to me that they look uniform and they come across as clear professionals. So, once again, the long answer is turnover and the amount of uniforms we've had to buy in this past year.
Makes sense, thank you. Any further questions on the police department's budget? All right, thank you very much, chief, and thank you for your diligence and hard work, both in this budget process and generally.
Thank you so much.
I know we'll have you before us plenty of times before your retirement, but...
I've got a lot to do in the next seven months, and I'm really looking forward to it, so I'm looking for civic days.
Much appreciated.
So, thank you, councilors.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
That a mayor, the floor is yours.
Next up, we have the fire budget presented by Assessor Paquette.
Good evening again. This year's fire budget, I'll be highlighting, it shows an increase from nine, nine million forty thousand to nine million two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand approximately, or a two-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-dollar increase, two-point-seven percent, in part due to several factors, the largest being previously negotiated contractual increases. The budget retains all staff with the reduction in number of clerical hours per department Some of the highlights of this budget which should be noted are Fire Chief Suarez, who is in the audience this evening and will be happy to answer questions when I'm done, is initially an ordinate salary, and he requested that he be frozen at the current salary in light of the budget situation. So, the budget before you reflects no increase in his FY twenty-five salary, other than the point-two for the adjustment in the amount of days in the year. The second initial request for an additional overtime was five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, and that number was reduced to five-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand. In this line item, just for reference, has historically been underfunded, so I don't know whether or not that would be able to suffice for the entire year. All other salary increases are contractual. The communications technician line item increased two thousand dollars due to contractor cost increase. These consist of hourly cost increases for hired radio expertise. Chief Suarez did not request any additional positions this year and reduced the hours of one administrative assistant in, within his office as well. Benefit and stipend increases were due to contractual obligations with settled union contracts. It's my understanding that professional standards line item includes the cost of six new sets of turnout gear, or potentially six new sets of turnout gear, to cover the cost of replacing what may be six potential retirements in the upcoming year. That number may have changed since February, I'm not certain. The incentives line item includes educational and certificate stipends, such as the EMT certifications. Another item, a note, code red, was not being utilized effectively, so that we're currently in the process of looking at alternative forms of community notification, so we've decided that line item should be removed this year. Electricity, there was a reduction in the cost of electricity in this budget, and that's due to the fact that Chief Suarez said they recently took the fire stations and converted them all to LED lighting, so he's hoping that the cost shown here is brought on by the savings that would be brought on by that. Also, my final point in this budget that I'm going to touch upon is the boilers. There's a reduction in the amount of heating expenses also. The boilers in all three fire stations are, for lack of a better word, failing. The boilers should be replaced, and although not in this budget, they have been proposed for the last several years and just not been funded. They've come to a complete critical repair point, and Chief Suarez is hoping that, you know, at some point after free cash is certified in fiscal twenty-five, that the city might be able to entertain the replacement of all these boilers for more energy-efficient boilers resulting in a savings. Once again, Chief Suarez is here to answer any questions regarding his budget, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Questions regarding the fire department's budget? I'm actually seeing none. Counselor Brochman.
Question on energy, energy, electricity. Have you thought about, since your placement down here in downtown Pittsburgh, is in the sun twenty-four-seven, solar panels?
Can you repeat that question, counselor?
Since you're downtown Pittsburgh and you're right in the sun twenty-four-seven, have you thought about solar panels on the building?
I have not. When we get into facilities manager, I'd be more than happy to talk to them about that, though.
Again, I'd just like to remind councilors, this is not the time to propose new capital expenses or anything. This is simply the time to ask questions about what is currently proposed to be spent in the budget. Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, in the sense of equity, Chief Suarez, and thank you again as well for your budget, your diligence here. What sort of strategies, same question I'd ask Chief Martino, what sort of strategies is the department implementing to, to make sure that the only overtime is going out are for emergencies?
Well, to be completely honest, we're kind of rolling the dice. That overtime amount has been level-funded for, this would be the third year in a row. Two years ago, we had quite a few building fires that went into multiple alarms. I think there were twenty-two for that fiscal year of twenty-three, and that, that's why we went over quite a bit on our overtime budget. This past year, we've been pretty fortunate. Our department's done a tremendous job at combating these fires and keeping them to a minimal of one alarms, and that's reduced our overtime quite a bit. We're hoping that in the future, we're going to have a great year, and, you know, to echo what Chief Martino has said, is just be a little more stringent with things such as training. Unfortunately, we're going to have to reduce that, send in firefighters to classes and that sort of thing, and then covering, backfilling their role at the station. That's going to be eliminated completely, and, you know, with a good year, hopefully we'll, we'll be able to get through it.
Thank you, chief. I yield the floor.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, thank you very much, chief.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And we are ready to proceed.
And Auditor Cronin will be presenting the Department of Public Works.
Just give me a minute to find my page. Twenty-eight. Thank you. Okay, the, the main goal that the commissioner used in approaching the budget was to maintain level funding for essential services and cut where it was possible to save money. And in doing that, they leaned on chapter ninety funds where it was allowable. In terms of positions, in the, in the administration, in the admin and engineering section on page twenty-eight, there had been a request for another civil engineer that was removed from the budget. On the next page, we have stormwater personal services. Again, there were, there were reductions here. There was a request for two additional stormwater employees, a foreman and LMEO, and those were also reduced along with, you know, requests for contracted services and supplies. In the streets section, there was initially a request for mechanic, and that was removed from the budget. The total reductions from streets were over, was over eight-hundred thousand dollars, including that mechanic, and several lines down below, the line painting, they're going to rely, originally it was, I'm not sure what the request was originally, but they're going to rely on chapter ninety for that, and also rely on chapter ninety for traffic sign maintenance and sidewalk maintenance wherever it's allowable. Let's see, and they'll also be looking at chapter ninety for pothole repairs, and if not, if, if chapter ninety does not allow that, they'll be asking for, possibly asking for additional appropriations to complete that work. On the next page, the, in the, in the capital section, you know, all capital was eliminated in the first round of the budget, but there will be immediate needs that include, and I think Commissioner Erickson mentioned it earlier, you know, with the international dump truck that needs to be replaced, I think a one-ton pickup and roadside mower.
Yeah, there's actually two international six-wheel dump trucks that went down this past year, one-ton pickup and roadside mower, and another sweeper. We haven't bought a sweeper in a few years. We used to purchase one every other year. Right now, out of the four sweepers that we do have, only one works. The other three have major repairs pending, and we're out of funds for motor vehicle repairs, but we did some internal transfers this evening at Finance Committee, so we're hoping that covers some of those repairs.
Counselor Jean Tally.
Where, where in this budget is the third-party contractor for pothole repairs, berm replacements?
Some will come out of the budgeted line items for pothole repair supplies, and the rest of it will have to come out of chapter ninety.
What is the majority of that contract seeking to accomplish?
Major repairs to roadways without doing full-on repavement. So, for example, the streets division milled and paved a lane on North Street a few years ago. Similarly, they did a repair out in front of the old Harper Furniture Building. So, that contract would be aimed at doing those types of repairs that are a little bit more substantial than just pothole patching, and the goal there would be to use as much chapter ninety money as possible to accomplish those repairs, so we're not dipping into the general funds and not, you know, essentially taking away from work. the general fund and not, you know, essentially taking away from work within the Streets Division.
And the berms too?
Berms too.
And that's coming out of Chapter 90?
It, the goal is to take it out of Chapter 90 because there's not a whole lot above and beyond what we already spend in the pothole repair budget to fund an additional third-party contractor.
So, the 1.1 million that we get from Chapter 90 every year, how much of that's going away for this stuff?
So, the goal would be to spend approximately a third of it on asphalt repairs, and then also earmarked within Chapter 90 fund, you have pavement preservation activities, so that would be like crack sealing, micro-surfacing, et cetera, and then you have vehicle and equipment purchases, and then you also have full-on roadway repaving. So, most people when they hear Chapter 90.
How much of that 1.1 million would be full-on road paving that everyone's been, everyone in this city who's got a pulse has been asking for?
My goal would be at least 50%.
So, $500,000, $550,000?
Based on the 1.1 million in Chapter 90 money that we get every year, yes. We also get some additional money that's put into our Chapter 90 account every year from a few different sources, one being the millionaire's tax, and there's a third one this year. I don't recall exactly the program, but we got about $68,000 out of it.
True or false, what we normally have paid out of the general fund for these kinds of items is now coming out of Chapter 90?
For some of these items, yes.
And how much of that do you estimate? $200,000, $300,000?
I'd say, based on the asphalt repair contract, $300,000. On top of that, we're looking at line painting, signage, and a few other items that Auditor Cronin mentioned.
So, all basic items of the DPW that we've done for 30 years is now going to be siphoning out of the paltry Chapter 90 that we already get, which means far less actual paving, correct?
Correct. The goal would be to only do that for the next few years until the city is in a better financial position, and then we have to, we'd hopefully be able to pivot away from reliance on Chapter 90 for those things.
So, Chapter 9, so, so, so just, so what you just basically said is our annual full-claim reclamation of paving is going to be reduced by at least a third?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I'll backtrack a little bit. So, that contract is out to bid right now. We haven't gotten final bids. We don't know what the prices are going to be. There's a chance that the prices that we get are outrageous, and we can't afford it, and we don't choose to award that contract. So, it all depends on what we see for bid results when we have the bid opening, which is scheduled for tomorrow, actually.
So, I get the berms. When have we ever been way behind on pothole repairs?
I started with the city in 2016, and we've been behind on pothole repairs since then.
But you, every time I put a ticket in, you guys do it within a week, so I'm missing something here.
Sometimes.
Does it have anything to do with the fact that you're down a streets crew because of this freeze?
I think the challenge that we have is equipment and manpower. We're able to field one hot-mix crew generally every working day, but we only have one hot-mix truck, we only have one roller, so if that truck goes down, then our hot-mix crew has to find an alternative. If that roller goes down, we can't compact properly. So, having some redundancy would be very nice, but we don't have that redundancy.
I just want the public to understand that the new method going forward now is less paving, which is exactly what they asked for.
Full-on road paving.
Counselor.
Less paving.
Counselor.
Correct, sir, less paving.
Less full-on road repaving. We're still putting money into asphalt repairs.
And what do the people in this city always ask for when it comes to streets?
We're asking questions about the budget, counselor.
So, less paving, got it. There you go.
Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Commissioner Erickson. Just sticking with the pavement, the paving, and for, sorry for the pun, what sort of layers are we using right now in Pittsburgh as far as depth and materials and things like that, and are we exploring possibilities for, you know, if we're going to repave roads for maybe less depth than the full-on road repairs?
Yes, so that's, that's something we're taking a look at. An example of that is Kimball Street, which we recently repaved instead of doing a full-on, full-depth reconstruction there. We just did a mill and overlay. That took a road that had one of the worst PCI's, Pavement Condition Index scores in the city, and right now, it's one of the best roads in the city. So, that's a little bit of an experimentation, because that road really is, was beyond what would be considered acceptable for a mill and overlay like that. So, we'll see how well it holds up. I've already noticed some spider cracking and alligator cracking, so we'll have to evaluate that over the next period of years and see how it holds up. Industrial Road, similarly, we did a mill and overlay there. We went a little deeper on that one just because of the heavy truck traffic there. That came out beautifully, and I expect that to hold up very well, and I'd like to do more of that mill and overlay approach instead of the full-depth reconstruction where, where possible. Really, it depends on the profile of the road that you're dealing with. I mean, without getting into a whole lesson on paving and all that right now, the road really dictates what it needs for repairs. So, if you have a road with multiple rutting issues, alligator cracking, other types of base failures, you really need to reclaim the roadway, which is grinding it up down into the dirt subgrade and paving from there. For other roads that still have a general, generally good profile and cross-section, then a mill and overlay is appropriate. So, hopefully that answers your question.
It does very well, thank you. It's just, I see a lot of municipalities doing this mill and overlay now, as, you know, I know that the general consensus, it maybe won't last as long, but, you know, with our topography issues that we consistently see, some barriers don't seem to last very long anyways, even when we do the full rebuild and we fill the potholes, you know, in the same year, you'll see those same potholes pop right back up. So, that's just an approach, and we can discuss that maybe at the next meeting, Council President, I don't want to go on too long, so, but yeah, maybe less Band-Aids and some more of this mill overlay experimentation is something to consider. Thank you.
I will say, we haven't done a lot of mill and overlay historically, at least since I've worked for the city. I started in 2016 as a civil engineer, and those decisions were outside of my control. But since I've taken over as Commissioner, I'm certainly more open to taking that approach, and we'll see how far it gets us, how well Kimball Street, Industrial Road, some of these other streets that we've milled and overlaid have pulled up. Summer Streets is another example of that mill and overlay approach.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Counselor Green.
I see on the request under the Streets Division, there was FY25 request of $22,177,000 and change, which obviously is not being awarded. Was that equipment replacement, or what was the bulk of that?
So, the bulk of that, it's that last set of items under the Streets Capital section. That totals $18,966,000. So, broken down, we have street repair, bridges, dams, streetlights, traffic signals, roads, sidewalks, retaining walls, and then the Broad Street facility and grounds. So, the bulk of that was capital funding to address some of those items.
And with those not being funded, is that just another year of kicking those projects down the road?
Yes, so I can kind of give an example of each of these. So, bridges, we have like the Oak Hill Road Bridge, for example, that has Jersey barriers to keep traffic off of the structurally compromised beams. Right now, we're working with Mass DOT on potentially funding that entire project, but that's, that's a good example of a bridge that needs a lot of work. Dams, we have McTaggart's Pond Dam is a great example, that's in poor condition. The impoundment's currently drawn down. We're working through the design of the removal, so hopefully that problem will go away shortly, but that's a good illustration of that type of problem. Streetlights, if you'll notice throughout the downtown and Water Street areas, we have concrete light poles from the 50s and 60s that are starting to decay and fall apart. Sometimes they have exposed rebar, chunks of concrete fall off, so those are things that need to be taken care of in the very short term. We've started to go through and take down the ones that are most dangerous. We've done about 12 in the past year and a half, but we like to continue. We have about 92 left. Traffic signals, traffic signals are very expensive and also very critical. You know, throughout the downtown corridor, if you look at all of our traffic signals, most of them are very old, you know, 20-plus years. We have new sets at the intersections of Main and Boulder, or, excuse me, Main and Putnam and Boulder and Putnam. So, really, we need to start thinking about replacing the signals throughout the city that are, that are 20-plus years old. Road sidewalks, I won't belabor the, belabor the point there, we know what condition the roads are in. Retaining walls, we have a number of retaining walls throughout the city that are extremely old. They were built, you know, well before the 1950s, 60s, sometimes back in the 1800s even. Kimball Street is a great example of that. There's a very large retaining wall next to Kimball Street. There's trees growing out of the top of it. Those all need to be cut down. That wall needs to be repointed. The drainage needs to be taken care of, and that's just one example of probably hundreds throughout the city that all, will require major, major capital investment, and the consequence of failure there is pretty large, because that's, that's a big project to undertake. If a wall like that next to Kimball Street collapses, then Kimball Street's closed until it's repaired, and if we don't have millions of dollars to throw at that, well, then Kimball Street's going to stay closed. And then Broad Street, the building was built in the 1800s, it's fallen apart. You know, we've had sewage leaks, we constantly have brown water, there's a number of issues with that facility. The parking lot's fallen apart, the fence is almost nonexistent, we've got homeless people gaining entry to the building on a regular basis, so at some point, some money needs to be invested there as well.
To the tune of almost $18 million?
The number could certainly be larger, too. You know, I tried to put some, some money towards it, or some forecasted money towards it, but certainly, you know, Broad Street itself, if you look at the renovations to Crocker School, or the new Crocker School, the new library, City Hall, those are all, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, 70 million-dollar projects. 1.8 million for the building renovations for Broad Street is a pretty small percentage of what it would really take to fully rehab that structure.
So, if we've been advised the next potentially three years are going to be lean, the chances that any of these projects or items will be addressed is nonexistent at this point, correct?
I would agree with that. I'm not sure that previous commissioners have taken the approach of asking for dollar values that are quite this large, but my approach is, you're not going to get it if you don't ask for it, and people aren't going to know you need it if you don't ask for it.
Right, I mean, that's why I commend, you know, when I saw that, I was like, good, good God, what are we spending 20, we asked with $22 million, but when you take it, you know, line item by line item, yeah, that's not much to add up to that figure, so.
Right.
I mean, you know, you're, I don't need to say that your department is near and dear to me, quite frankly, but, you know, yikes, the fact that we're not in the next three years going to get to address any of those, it means that it's further down the road, and then in another three to five years, we'll have to hear about how we didn't do what we were made aware of at the time, so we've got some work to do. So, thank you for being diligent, and thank you for at least admitting that there's things that need fixed and addressed that are big-ticket items. Thank you.
Vice President Ben Hasengah.
So, as was discussed, the process of forming the budget starts in the winter, which is before the snow season ends, and you have some base round numbers with snow and ice. I was just wondering if you have an update to what the final costs were. I mean, now that was 90-plus degrees today, I hope we're done with that, so.
I do have the snow and ice spreadsheet.
I think the, the projection for this past year is 1.5 million. I was wondering, I'm hoping you're coming in below, but.
Let's see here.
950?
Um, let's see, 905, 280. Total cost prior year, 1.301,689.
Okay, so, I mean, that's, that's good news, I appreciate that, again, it's, God, it's not higher than the previous year. So, it looks like we're funding $550,000 into the snow and ice reserve, and then traditionally, we've made a free cash allocation to make up the difference, so it looks like the, our reserve funding is a little lower than what we've tried to do in previous years. I think it's usually been around 675, is that right, Ms. Cronin?
Yeah, I don't think we've been able to actually do the reserve in advance. We kind of dropped that last year, so we're just running with the straight appropriation that we'll need to be, we'll need free cash every year to supplement this.
So, we're looking, so if we get back up to where we were, we'll need another $400,000 last year. If we're back up to the 23 level, we're going to need another $700,000, $800,000.
Yeah, I mean, what's changed is that we're no longer getting ahead of it, so we were putting it aside for the following year in a reserve, but we're not able to do that anymore, so. Like this year, we appropriated $500,000 into the account, and we'll have to continue to do that until revenues build up again that we can, you know, get ahead.
So, ideally, we'd want to put in the whole amount, but at least.
Yeah, but by law, we don't want to put in the whole amount, because once you put in a full million or so, you are not allowed to deficit spend.
Okay.
This way, we can deficit spend beyond 500, so if you keep, if you aim low, then you're never, you're not, you're not tying your budget down every year, because they require you to budget the same amount you budgeted the last, the year before in order to deficit spend.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes, thank you. This is a piggyback on Counselor Green. So, where we have reduced this budget so much, I'm curious where, we have the Public Works meeting once a month, and we've already got a backlog of items and roads and things, and berms and sidewalks, how much further down the road are we pushing these projects? So, when we approve something, are we telling them it's not going to be done for years?
I mean, we've got a backlog of approved petitions, sidewalks, berms, et cetera, dating back, you know, five-plus years. We try to take care of the ones that are most critical as soon as we possibly can, so ones that are causing either private property damage or damage to roadways, et cetera, and that's, the criticality of, of the petition that's approved kind of supersedes the date that it was approved. So, I guess it depends on the nature of the issue, really, to answer that question accurately.
So, okay, so we continue to approve them, but tell them it may not be five years before this project is completed.
Right.
In the meantime, it builds up, and what may have cost 50,000 could be 75,000 now to fix.
Right. I mean, with berms, sidewalks, sometimes the requests are made for aesthetic purposes only. You know, someone has a berm that's damaged by the plow, but, you know, they like looking at a nice, nice mint berm to go along with their nice, nicely manicured lawn, so repairs like that are a little bit more superficial versus a berm that's damaged and the berm is there to control stormwater runoff, and not having the berm there causes, you know, erosion to private property, et cetera, so those are the more critical ones to take care of more promptly.
Okay, because no, Pearl Hill Road has several of those, and they've already been pushed out a few years.
Right, and Pearl Hill Road itself is in very, very terrible condition. It needs a full-on repaving job. In order to repave that and have it last, it needs significant drainage work done, too, and the drainage work is what is prohibitively expensive due to the presence of ledge out there and just lack of overall space with the topography and right-of-way with.
Okay, so we don't want to give people false hope that it's going to get fixed immediately.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz.
I had a couple of questions. I guess, you know, to follow up on what Counselor Dean Atalley said, we are paving some roads, we just approved that, that money from the state. Could you tell us what roads are going to be, going to be paved, you know, so the public would know that it's not, not all is lost.
So, so we've got a couple of sources of road paving ahead of us in the next couple of years. Some of it is tied to the combined sewer-separation projects that are in progress. Some of it is tied to the water main projects that are being worked on, Boulder Drive, Main Street, and then the disaster relief funding that you just mentioned. The goal would be to repave roads in the area that was heavily impacted by that storm in July 16th, so that would be Fairbanks, Monroe, Birch, Hobson, Lower Haywood, that whole neighborhood. Without having an exhaustive list in front of me, those are some of the highlights.
And also Klegon, Martell Street and Daniel Street.
Yeah, Martell Street and Daniel Street were both heavily damaged, so we'd be looking at making some repairs there. I've worked with Unitil to try to get ahead of repaving some of those roads, especially over in the Fairbanks, Monroe, Birch, Hobson Street areas. I do need to check with water and sewer just to make sure they're all clear on all the streets that, that we're intending to pave, because the last thing we want to do is pave something then have to dig it up because of a water main break or something similar to that, so.
And so, if Kimball Street works out, then maybe we can really expand even that to, you know, to other areas of the city.
Right, right. Right. Right.
The other, the other area, are we on, can we ask about the cemetery and the mausoleum?
I don't think we've gotten there yet.
I believe the cemetery is tomorrow night. Or there's that, oh, that's all part of this. Oh, yeah, we haven't just got.
That's right.
So we have, we haven't quite gotten to that yet, but.
Okay, I'll save that.
It will be tonight.
Okay.
Counselor Walsh.
Thank you. To follow up on Counselor Fleming's question, when, when you say, you know, things have been approved at the meeting for DPW and those projects are backlogged, is it, is it because, strictly because of funding? Or is it because of manpower or a combination of both?
It's a combination of both. We typically are able to field essentially three, three crews on the Streets Division. And that's split between all of the work within the city. So typically, we field one hotmix crew that takes care of pothole patching. If they're not doing pothole patching, then that means they're working on a larger paving project. We paved Ashburnham Hill Road last year internally. That hotmix crew does hotmix sidewalk work, too. So those are some of the things that they do. We have a crew that typically focuses on stormwater-related work. So catch basins, manholes, drain lines, that type of thing. And then we try to run another crew that does sidewalk work. So like right now, they're working out near the Abolitionist Park on, on Snow Street. So beyond that, we have a couple of other people that float around and do stuff like catch basin cleaning. That's kind of a one-man operation. Like today, we had guys running trucks, stockpiling loam that came out of Crocker Field and putting it at the Lagoon Parcel we have on Princeton Road. You know, we get calls to clean up trash, deal with motor vehicle accident cleanups. There was a potato truck that spilled a couple of months ago, so we had to sweep and clean up potatoes on the road. We do street sweeping, you know, that type of stuff, too. So that pulls us in a lot of different directions. So manpower is certainly an issue. And then if, obviously, if we had an open checkbook, we could hire a contractor to fill in the gaps where we can't cover with our own labor. So it's definitely a combination of both.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Before, before I go on to people, to counselors on the second round of questions for this department, I do just want to ask that we refocus specifically on line items. Once we started talking about operations, I wanted to give everyone an even chance to ask their questions about that. But now that everyone has spoken once on the matter, I would like to tightly refocus us on just the actual line items. That being said, I have Counselor Dean Atalley.
Thank you. The roads and sidewalks, the two point one million, that's not, not happening. That's being cut. Those, those streets you mentioned earlier with respect to this line item, was all that funding in place, when was all that funding in place by?
The two point one million?
All the money that's going to paving this year. When was that all secured?
The free cash appropriations were made, I want to say, a year and a half ago by Mayor Dean Atalley. Some of it is leftover unspent Chapter ninety funds. Some of it is unspent millionaires tax funds from previous years. So what we have available to us right now is not just this year's Chapter ninety funds, but it's also previous year's free cash allocations and previous year's Chapter ninety balances that remain.
All situated before the end of twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
On twenty twenty-three?
With the exception of the, this year's Chapter ninety funds, yes.
And so I'm not talking FY twenty-four, FY twenty-five, next year, twenty twenty-five. True or false, there'll be far less paving with Chapter ninety?
Based on the need to put that money elsewhere, yes.
That's what I was talking about. Okay. So when it comes to your Streets Division with the labor line item, the four positions that aren't filled, those are funded in this budget, right?
Yes.
And what, what were you told as to when you can hire these people?
Once the budget is approved by City Council.
So are there recs already established for those positions?
There's job descriptions drafted and ready to go. We'd have to work with HR to get, get those actually out there in the world.
How long have you been with those positions?
The general foreman, Craig retired earlier this year, February. The working foreman has been a little bit longer. That's been vacant for a little while. And then we have two vacancies that are more recent on the labor side. One by an internal candidate that went and took a job as mechanic on the Streets Division, within the Streets Division, and another employee that transferred over to parks.
And all this talk we've had today about backlog, what, for those four positions, as Commissioner, have you ever had a fully funded Street staff?
I have not.
Not fully funded, I'm sorry. Have you ever had a fully staffed Streets Division?
Yeah, I knew what you're talking about. But no, I have not.
Would that contribute to any reason why you have had backlog exacerbated so, for so?
It certainly doesn't help. One of the issues for staffing was the rates that we were paying. For, for, as long as I can remember, the Streets Division guys were significantly underpaid. We recently negotiated a contract with Loca one seventy, and that's brought those pays up. That problem, I think, is solved.
I got it. Now it's self-inflicted wounds because we're not hiring those four positions, correct?
It would certainly help us get more work done, yeah.
Okay. So we're, we're hoping by the time this council passes the budget, I'm going to see recs the next morning for those four positions then, correct?
I can't speak to how quickly the term.
Yes.
There you go.
The next day.
What was the logic behind not having those positions filled right away?
Some of it was because we needed to modify job descriptions. Some of it was just due to lack of time to, to get the postings done. There wasn't any real intentional delay behind it until we discovered that the city was in some financial trouble and were told to just cool it on hiring until the budget's figured out.
Have there been other division, have there been other departments that have had hiring, though, in that time?
Counselor. We're asking about line items and the DPW. We're not asking about other departments right now.
Okay, I'll reserve my, my, my statements for next Thursday.
Can't wait.
But you know where I'm going with this. Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, Commissioner Erickson, you almost survived, I almost forgot about the overtime question that I've been harping on tonight. You've got a fifty percent increase for the Streets Division from what's projected FY twenty-four to requested, which the mayor has allocated. And then in the reverse direction, you've got almost a hundred percent decrease from snow and ice overtime. Can you go into a little bit of that and elaborate on how those numbers came to be?
So historically, we've needed to transfer money from within towards the end of each fiscal year to account for overtime overages. We've seen an increase in the amount of community type events that we need to allocate overtime staff towards. And we've certainly seen our fair share of difficult winters with a lot of, you know, snow, particularly icing events that require us to treat the roadways a little bit more frequently. So that, that's some of the thinking behind those numbers. What we're looking at are ways to help control some of that overtime spending. The city of Worcester has a good model by which they, they charge users of their parks for these community type events, similar to police details for DPW staff to support those events. That would be something that we'd be looking into a little bit more over the next year and potentially considering in the future. I think that would help offset some of the overtime expenses there. A lot of our overtime expenses, though, are due to weather. So we've seen an increase in severe rainstorms over the past year. So that, that's gone into some of the numbers that are put before you. And then obviously, we can't predict the, the snow and ice that we'll receive. So we, we want to make sure that we're prepared, but not going overboard. So it's a fine balance that we need to strike between being conscious of overtime spending, but also making sure we've got the, the right money there in case we need it.
You're muted, Counselor.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Commissioner. I yield the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brochman.
Chief, Chief, I'm getting tired. Isn't stormwater labor MS four, I presume, this, this question is, I always thought that when Lenny Lasca was here and the MS four program came out, you were going to have two full-time employees on a part-time basis. They work X amount of days, say, from June until the snow fell, and then we're coming out. Is this going to be, those two positions, they're going to be permanent? And they're going to just be working on catch basins and manhole covers?
So these, these two stormwater labors are permanent, and they've been in the budget for a number of years as, as permanent full-time staff. Because of the level of staffing within DPW, we try to have these labors work on stormwater issues most of the time, but inevitably, they get pulled to do other tasks, especially in the wintertime. They end up working on snow and ice. If there's some other need within the city, a lot of times, they'll get pulled off of stormwater stuff to help with, whether it's sidewalk work or if we're doing a big paving job and we need a couple extra guys to fill in. And two guys really isn't enough to form a full crew. This year, we had asked for a couple of extra stormwater labor staff so that we could round out a full crew and dedicate a full crew to stormwater a hundred percent of the time. Two guys just isn't enough because stormwater, especially with catch basin repairs and manhole repairs, you're talking about excavation, hauling, pipe installations, that type of stuff. So you really need three or four people. And two just, just doesn't quite cut it. So what we do utilize this, this line item for is catch basin cleaning. So we try to send out a catch basin cleaner on a regular basis. And that's a one-man operation. So one of those, those staff members is usually dedicated to that.
Okay. My question, I want to go back to where Amy Green was on the price there for two hundred. My question, I just want you to refresh my memory. You weren't the head commissioner then. I believe Lenny Lasca was the head one. Obaway, Obaway, the walls, retaining walls are caving in. I thought we appropriated funds for Obaway. Didn't we, Mr. President? Were you on the council then?
I believe we did.
So that, that issue goes back to twenty fourteen, and there's been multiple appropriations made to attempt to address that problem. A portion of the appropriations were utilized for analysis and engineering. And right now, we're at the point where our consultant is preparing documents for permitting and bidding with a timeline of bidding out that project at some point in July or August for construction. But it has been lingering for a number of years. With COVID, things got put on hold. And we're hoping to get that project done this year.
Yes. What they're going to do is backfill, right? They're going to throw dirt behind it to build.
Counselor.
Yeah.
Let's stick, you, your first question was about what the budget, why we still had this line item in the budget. That's good. The details of how it's going to be done are not on tonight's agenda.
Oh, God, you're cracking me up here.
That is what we're planning to do, yes.
All right. Now, let's go back on the same page, thirty-one. Could you explain to me why we get the streetlight maintenance going from seventy-five to a hundred and forty thousand dollars for a streetlight repairs? I think it's repairs, streetlight maintenance, huh?
So.
Besides the, I understand what you, the, the cement ones, you already talked about that, but.
Yeah, there's, there's the cement poles. And then a number of years ago, we made the investment to convert all of our streetlights to LEDs. And those are nearing the age in their life where we begin to see more failures because they're, they're older now. So that's one increase in cost that we're seeing. You know, earlier today at the Finance Committee meeting, one of the, the transfers from within was to cover approximately an eighty thousand dollar overspend on the, the streetlight line item. So this, this ask is intended to avoid having to come back to you next May, June and ask for a transfer from within to cover those overages. But streetlights are an important part of, of, of the city's operations, the DPW's operations. People like streetlights because it makes them feel safe in their cars when they're walking around in front of their homes. So it's important to make sure that we stay on top of streetlight repairs, complete them in a timely fashion. And the last thing I'd, I'd like to see is to have to turn the streetlights off again. So we want to be conscious of that as well.
All right. That'd be if, and though, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. I have a small question of my own. Well, two questions, really. One is, you know, it goes without saying that we always need more money for the streets. That, everyone knows that. But given that we are in a year where we're cutting positions due to attrition or via attrition and so on, given that, why are we going up thirty thousand dollars in pothole repairs this year, given that that could fund a large portion of one of the positions in any department that's, that's being not filled? I guess this is more a question for the mayor than for the Commissioner, I suppose.
Well, I guess I could help explain the need for that extra thirty thousand dollars, and then I can pass it over to the mayor. Every year that we don't repave a road, it decays one year more. And we've got a hundred and eighty miles of publicly owned road within the city. So a hundred and eighty times one year of decay over the entire city equates to essentially more pothole repairs every year unless we're able to maintain a certain baseline of, of funding for paving. Former Commissioner Laxo, right before he retired, put together a memo to the entire City Council that walked through some of the calculations for how much investment was needed on an annual basis to maintain the status quo. And that number was approximately ten million, I believe, back then. Number's probably closer to fifteen or twenty million now with the increases in asphalt.
That's per year.
Per year.
Yes.
Right. So that's, that's the need for more pothole repair supplies. It's just, the fact is that there's more potholes out there now because it's one more year without doing lawn road repaving in a large portion of the city.
That makes, that makes good sense. I'm actually all set, Madam Mayor.
Well, I'd like to just add, my deputy chief of staff, Miles Phillips Wilcox, takes the majority of the damage claims that comes through the mayor's office. And we've estimated just through the end of April that we have received between forty and fifty, was it approximately fifty?
Close to fifty, yeah.
Close to fifty damage claims. And the average cost of these claims for damage due to pothole through the cars, through the residents' cars, has been twelve hundred eighty-one dollars. So, you know, the, the cost right there to the residents of the city are over fifty thousand dollars. If you aggregate that, first of all, consider the number of people that actually submit claims for the damage to their cars, right? Just, just consider anecdotally, how many people that actually damaged their cars actually submit a claim. Then times that by, you know, two point five, right? Because the number of months in the year. And, you know, we're talking about an aggregate of over a hundred thousand dollars in damages to personal vehicles. So, you know, filling the potholes is absolutely crucial to the city of Pittsburgh, to the residents, to the DPW. And like, you know, Commissioner Erickson said, we have gotten behind on filling the potholes. So it's just an absolutely crucial element to the DPW operation.
Makes sense. The other question, and I actually forgot to ask this of the prior two departments. I'll follow up with the chiefs later. I hate to be nickel and dime guy. I genuinely hate it. But I want to just understand better what specifically is represented by the line item, by the last three line items on the front page, the dues and subscriptions, training and education, and travel and meetings. I've never really looked at them much before. I, I'd just like to get kind of an overview of like what, I know it's a small amount of money, but what does it actually pay for?
So dues and subscriptions is for professional associations. There's the Massachusetts Highway Association, a few of those other organizations that we participate in. I think a lot of times, that line item is, is not fully spent, and we give it back to the, the general fund. And that, that's usually applicable to our, our admin and engineering staff. So each of them have different associations that they belong to and whatnot. I myself, in the past, have historically belonged to New England Water and Environment Association, American Water Works Association, through the Massachusetts Water Works Association, and a few of those other organizations. I'm not current on, I'd say, ninety-nine point nine percent of those organizations anymore. But some of my subordinate employees certainly are, and it's part of their professional development and well-being.
And just before you go, I know you're going to answer all of my questions, but just on those dues and subscriptions specifically, that's not like, aside from the professional associations you just mentioned, that's not like, you know, just trade publications or something?
No.
Okay. Excellent.
Training and education, obviously, that's training for staff. Training and education, obviously, that's training for staff. You know, we've got a lot of different things that the DPW does. None of us are experts at everything. So, there's training opportunities that we like to take advantage of and send our guys to. Bay State Roads provides a fantastic offering of trainings for our labor staff, our engineering staff, our management staff. So, there's a variety of different things that we take advantage of there, whether it's management training, or more technical training for like, say, sidewalk reconstruction, snow and ice, et cetera. So, that's that line item. And travel and meetings, a lot of times, if an employee is going through training during the workday, we'll reimburse them for mileage if they take their own personal vehicle, and that's where that comes out of. When there's an opportunity, we have them take city vehicles to a training, but that's not always practical if someone is going to a training that's kind of on the other side of their house, or closer to their house than it is to the city, for example. So, you know, we do our best to minimize the impact to the city for those, but if they have to take their personal car, that's where it comes out of.
Okay, makes sense, now I know. Thank you very much. Any further questions from other counselors? All right, I think we can move on to, I guess, the cemetery would be next, then?
Thank you.
I'll stay up here, if you don't mind, and then, if there's any specific questions, we do have Jaclyn Poreer in the audience, too.
You can have a-
Page is that one?
32.
32.
Yeah.
Well, I have a few notes, but of course, they're, you know, your questions won't be answered. So, let's see. In terms of reductions that were proposed and are part of this, the cemetery basically turned back about $600,000. The labor line item is, there was nothing cut from there. Those four positions are needed for funerals on nights and weekends. The summer help, there was one vacancy that was not filled. I think the request was for five, and it was reduced to four. The other major line item here is building and ground repairs. That was reduced by $15,000, and it will impact the water mitigation efforts in Section Q, which I think was the subject of an appropriation last week from perpetual care. The other main point to make here, again, is with the capital down below. The cemetery expansion project, you know, is coming, you know, in the next few years. I think that's going to need more capital funding. And there's also the mausoleum, which, you know, has a critical need with no funding source right now. So, they have begun the project to do the, not initial design, but just a conditions assessment. And hopefully, we'll be able to get them to the next level, or at least they have a set of design plans set so that we have an idea of what the total cost will be to repair that beautiful building.
Counselor Janice Holly? Oh, I'm sorry, I did have Counselor Green beforehand, but-
Go ahead.
One seasonal worker is $5,700? Is that what I'm reading here?
Yeah, yeah, one summer help.
We nickel-and-dime the cemetery department for $5,700 for one seasonal employee?
With a budget like cemetery's, you know, when you're asked to cut, there's not a whole lot to cut. So, that's one of the places we chose to reduce expenses.
Well, actually, the initial request was for $50,000. It was reduced to 32.
Where's the $50,000?
Well, it was one of the reductions when we turned to departments, yeah. Yeah, the $5,700 is just the difference between fiscal '24 and fiscal '25.
I don't care what they requested, I care what they got this year, because that's the true cut, is what they got this year versus what they're getting next year. You're getting one less seasonal person next year, right? Correct?
Yeah.
And that less seasonal person is $5,700.
Correct. $18,000 within the budget.
How many do you have right now? What's the $37,000 funding?
That would be for the temp help to start before Memorial Day. They're on a pause.
How many do you have?
Zero.
Right now, zero? But what would that, what would the $32,000 fund, four?
Yes, it would fund four for Memorial Day, for the season.
Right.
And then, it starts up for the next year.
Last year, how many did we have?
I mean, five last year, correct?
Five.
So, is it correct that you're losing one seasonal worker with this?
Yes.
This year? Okay. The restoration of that position would require the $5,712 that's reduced?
That would be $18,000 in the budget.
So, where are we going from five to four if that line item's only down by $5,700? If I may, Counselor, would I be correct in assuming that that $57,000 is subtracting one laborer, but then adding an increase in pay due to either cost of living or contractual, something of that nature?
What I'm asking is, it says $37,712 for FY '24, and we just heard that we had five seasonal workers. This year, it's $32,000, that's $5,700 less for seasonal workers. So, if it's $18,000 per worker, I'm not getting the math. We had five last fiscal year at $37,712. This fiscal year, it's 32 with a reduction of $5,700. That's not $18,000. So, how are we losing one person, then?
I'm not sure where the $18,000 number is coming from.
The original department request was $50,000 for five summer help.
Oh, I see.
Right. The summer help comes in, they stagger. They come in, some come like, the beginning of May, some graduate, some come in the end of June, so it's kind of a staggering number.
I did it, yeah.
And we had a hard time last year hiring the full potential of help within the department.
But you had five last year, and you're going to have four this year, correct?
That's what was budgeted.
Budgeted?
Yeah.
Okay. And for the stated mausoleum, I know we appropriated $100,000 for the OPM?
You're right, OPM, and then, additional appropriation for the existing conditions assessment. So, right now, we're at the completion of the existing conditions assessment phase. The next phase would be producing the design documents, would be the design of the repairs. And then, after that, would be bidding and then, construction.
And what's the design part cost?
We're estimating about $400,000.
So, with no funding source for the $400,000, I recall a couple of weeks ago to the Finance Committee that the $1.4 million that we opened for a loan for the fire truck, which the auditor said is highly likely we're not going to need all that, would that be a candidate for diverting some of that borrowing capacity to get that $400,000?
I think that would be a good thing to get that project going, but I can't speak to the other needs in the city, that's-
Understood, there's many needs in the city. That building's going to collapse any year now, so.
The building envelope is compromised, and the big problem is the water ingress. So, if we can fix the building envelope problem, then I think we're solving 99% of the issues there. And then, it's a matter of just restoring the inside. So, we can take a few different approaches, one being just doing it all at once, exterior and interior, second being just focusing on the exterior envelope and then putting off the interior repairs. So, based on those two approaches, you're looking at a cost of probably $3 to $4 million for the total package, and probably around $2 million for the exterior envelope only.
And in the cemetery department, does the cemetery and the parks department work hand-in-hand at all? Do they like-
They used to.
Like, the cemetery guys will help with parks and the park, is there any-
They used to be merged at the administrative level, so Jaclyn would handle doing all the payroll and stuff for the parks guys and the cemetery guys. But as far as the actual labor, they still maintain separation there. The only overlap is one of our COGSOL caretakers was also a summer help at the cemeteries during the summertime. Since Mr. Bundles taken over as Parks and Recreation Director, he's taken on the administrative role that Jaclyn used to fill, and his office manages all the payroll for his parks guys now.
And that labor for FTE, do you have all four right now?
I do not, I have three right now.
There's a vacancy?
Yes.
How long's that vacancy been existing?
We, I think it was in January or February, we had somebody transferred. We did go through, we did post the job, we went through the interviews, and the person declined, and then, we've kind of been on a holding pattern at this point.
I'm going on a limb here. Can I, when was this, when was this hiring freeze instituted? When was it instituted?
I don't recall the exact date, to be honest. I want to say sometime mid-April.
Three months after this person transferred?
Like Jaclyn said, we did go through the search for a replacement. We interviewed, we made an offer, and then, we were ghosted. So, we were back to square one right around the time that the hiring freeze was implemented. So, it was unfortunate, we wish we moved forward with the candidate that we had selected, but we chose to not.
And this position funded in this budget that you have to wait until we pass it? Thank you.
Counselor Green?
I know that the mausoleum is first and foremost with our cemeteries. I do have to say that the cemeteries have always looked very, very nice, so I want to commend everybody who works on the cemeteries to keep them looking amazing. And I know this is a long shot, but are we ever going to get to a point where we could be in negotiations for our own crematorium?
Counselor, I'm sorry, again, we can't really talk about future plans outside the budget at this point.
We're, just in the cemetery budget alone, it looks like we're, we've been asked to deficit $4.8 million. So, no renovations to the mausoleum, no money for the design, the expansion on either way. So, again, we're at a standstill where the further, the further along that we don't address it, it's going to get more and more expensive, and then, we're going to have it, then we're going to have a $40 million project ahead of us. Thank you, that's all.
I just, mind if I add to that? So, included in this budget, we asked for funding to begin the site design, so that's the site design for that expansion across Electric Ave from the existing Forest Hill. The intent there was to start that process. It's probably going to be a three-year design process. We have about five years-ish remaining worth of graves at Forest Hill. So, that's kind of the critical path item to get that expansion done, is getting that site work, or site design done, so that we can bid that project out and get it constructed. That $500,000 number for the design is just a rough cost. It might cost a little bit more than that, might cost a little bit less. And then, construction costs over there, last time we went through an exercise was back in 2018 for estimating that cost. And it's going to be in the millions, if not 10-plus millions of dollars to get that done.
Right, and on a, in a budget where it's going to be leaned not only for '24, '25, '26, '27, we're essentially five years down the road before we can address what the need is now.
Right.
With an expansion where there will be no availability of plots or land available unless we sell the heck out of the boxes, what, I don't know.
Columbary, yeah.
Yeah, those. So, I just want people to be aware that when we don't fund and finance these kind of projects that have been on, you know, we've known about it for years, it just gets further and further behind, and then, you know, we're going to be stuck again going, oh, yeah, you knew about it, but you couldn't do anything about it. So, it's just a matter of timing, I guess. Thank you.
Counselor Schultz?
Yeah, I was going to ask about the mausoleum, because of course, Judy Perla came to my award meeting this month and was, you know, had quite a bit to say about trying to get funding for it. You mentioned earlier that it would cost $2 million to take care of the exterior of the mausoleum. Is there anything else we could do for a line item where we could just, you know, stop the immediate decay and do anything with that? Not looking at the plans that we have now, and, you know, the $3, $3.5 million that you had originally requested, is there anything we can do to stop the rapid decay of the building?
Aside from just getting a really big tarp, that's really the issue, and it's been an issue that's been going on since the '70s. You know, Jaclyn's found newspaper articles from back then about the roof leaking and all that. And we've tried Band-Aid approaches in the past, you know, $5,000 here to bring a roofing contractor in, $10,000 here, and it always leads back to the same spot that we're in right now, where the repairs last for a year or two, and then, the leaking starts back up, and then, we're left, you know, struggling with trying to figure out what to do. The real answer is to have a design team go in, identify all of the issues, and then design the appropriate repairs and get them all done, instead of doing a piecemeal approach like we've tried over the past few years. The people that we have on board for the design team right now are extremely qualified. We have an OPM that's fantastic. We have the Spencer Group, which is a preservation group with experience with mausoleums and other historic structures. And we have them under contract to do the work right now, which is fantastic. The problem is, we just don't have the money to fund the next step of the work. So, we're at a critical point where it would be great to have the funding, at least to complete the design documents, even if those designs sit on the shelf until we can get the construction funding. But that's kind of what needs to happen at this point. I don't think we can just stop the bleeding with any small amount of money. I think we're beyond that at this point.
It's my understanding, there's not a lot available as far as state, federal funding for a project of this nature. So, I mean, is it, we're putting out a loan for a ladder truck, do we put out, you know, do we need to take a loan out to fund this, because it's so critical that we do this at this point, before it becomes, as Counselor Green said, a $40 million project?
The problem with that, Counselor, would be capacity to repay that loan, and we are stretched to the max.
Right. Well, it's good to ask the question, anyway. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Counselor Cregan?
Thank you. Yeah, I've had numerous conversations with members of the trustees of the public burial grounds, and some years back during COVID, I suggested the idea of a Friends of the Mausoleum. So, I guess my question is, would folks be available on Tuesday, June 18th, for a conversation? I need to get confirmations from people, because there's a lot of interest in creating that. I've been doing some groundwork, the Historical Commission has interest, the Historical Society, individual members, mind you, people who are affiliated with historical structures. So, other cities larger than us have one, obviously, they started much earlier, like Cambridge.
Counselor? I'm sorry, I think it's a great idea, but I have to hold you to the budget.
Hold me to the budget. Let me ask you this, would a Friends group that was able to raise $10,000 this year, would that be helpful?
Yes, it would, yeah.
Okay. I yield the floor.
Counselor Bochman?
Question for you. Over time, it went from $15,000 to $25,000, is there a reason why?
Well, that was contractual with the, with the.
Overtime is contractual?
Well, their rates of salary went up, so the overtime rates went up as well. And a lot of people are now doing their funerals on the weekends. They don't want to take time off during the week. So my gentlemen work on the weekends.
Was that right? So you, we don't charge extra if they don't want to go during the week?
We do.
We do charge extra.
Yes.
And then the other one is building and grounds repair from $38,000, $45,000 to $55,000.
Fourth line down, second section.
Page 32.
Okay, so that was increased for additional landscaping that we need to do within the cemetery, in the Memorial Gardens area, to add some shrubbery and such in there. The installation of the new columbarium, we're going to need to add bricks in that area. I need some signage. And I had put, well, this was back in February, I was hoping to do some more upgrades in Section Q, but we're taking care of that.
And just to clarify for the viewing public, the Memorial Gardens section is the area across from Memorial Middle School that the DPW assisted with expanding recently. So it still needs pathway paving, final landscaping, et cetera. And then the columbarium area is just to the northeast of that section of Memorial Gardens, essentially. And that columbarium is, it's that large structure that houses urns.
Yep.
So Cemetery is looking to add a few more columbarium structures in that area.
Yeah, because he came in front of us last week, couple days ago, right?
Correct.
Because I was kind of upset because we spent a lot of money up there.
Counselor.
All right. All right.
Do I have any further questions from counselors on the cemetery? I have just one, just again, in the spirit of increasing my own knowledge. The, sorry, I lost it. The dues and subscriptions line item, what does that go towards in your department?
I am a member of the Mass Cemetery Association. I'm a member of the New England Cemetery Association, and a member of the ICCFA, which is the International Cremation Cemetery Funeral Home Association. The dues went down because the ICCFA went down on their dues for me. I also get the Sentinel every day. We use the obituaries.
Okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
If we have no, oh, Counselor Fleming?
Oh, no. I was just looking at the lights that were on.
Oh, oh, I see. I thought maybe like a bird had gotten in or something. If there are no further questions on the cemetery budget, then we are all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jaclyn.
Come on down.
You want a candy? No, right there.
That's Annie's.
What's happening?
I took care of her.
So we talked about that?
I can introduce you. Okay. So we'll move on to Parks and Recreation. And I spoke with Director Bundle earlier, and he pretty much laid out that the, the goal of the Parks and Rec Director, you know, on his arrival was to address the historical gap in budgeting for parks improvements and upkeep, as well as for recreation programming and community events. So he's worked pretty diligently to make those things happen. The fiscal year '24 and '25 budgets demonstrate the city's commitment to the same. You can see, you know, just on the bottom line, we've almost doubled or tripled that commitment over the past couple of years. So these investments, combined with the Director's proactive pursuit of grants, is paying off with, with improvements to the parks and with more programming for members of the community. We discussed, in order, and also in terms of the recreation budget, you know, the mayor has, you know, decided to continue with all summer programs, so it was not affected by any of these budgetary considerations. We did, in talking to Mr. Bundle, we did discuss, there is a revolving fund where some of the fees that are charged for recreation programs are held, and we did discuss maybe using a little bit of that on an annual basis to offset the cost of the programs to the general fund. So that's the, well, it's a total of $30,000 that you see in there being offset. And that's something that we would make sure that we didn't deplete any revolving fund, but just recognize that there is another revenue source to help support these programs. See, in terms of the staffing, the labor in the Parks Department is level funded. There was a request for a flex position, maybe to, you know, be a summer position, and then in the winter, maybe work in the machine shop. But that was, that was eliminated in the process. Temporary labor, let's see, is, let's see, we removed one person? Yeah, so the temporary labor is two seasonal people plus the two people that are part-time employees that service CogZaw Park on a, on a year-round basis.
Questions? Counselor Fleming?
So if I'm understanding this correctly, there's four full, there'll be four full-time employees, and then two part-timers at CogZaw?
Yeah, there is now.
But then there'll be two come the winter?
The CogZaw employees are year-round. They open and close the park.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Giuntali?
Are there any of these positions, full-time positions, you're being funded for that you're being compelled not to hire?
Currently, no. I have, well, we just recently, no? Yeah, that's what I, nothing on that, right?
You have full staff, the four, the four employees, the four full-time?
There's something that we'd rather not discuss.
Somebody leave. So, and that just happened. So it is in the budget, but it literally just happened. So it will be posted.
After the budget's passed, right?
After.
Okay. Well, I'm, okay. Just, just checking. Thank you.
Counselor Green.
The playground instructor or instructors from $23,000 and change to $55,000 and change? Is that, why is there a $30,000 increase?
That was in part of the new wage ordinance and the number of staff.
So how many, how many playground instructors does that?
Currently, we have 12, we will have 12 and one, 12 instructors, which are the regular, like counselors, and then one supervisor staff that oversees them.
All right. And?
Just want to add to that, too. So the, what you're seeing in FY '23, '24 projected, we've had a number of vacancies within the playground instructor line item. We haven't fully staffed that in quite some time. So the budget number reflects full staffing.
And that's roughly about $5,000, correct? $5,100 and change as, as the?
Twelve.
Twelve of them at around $5,700.
I think it's a little less than $5,700. If you divide that 55, 440 by 12, I think it's.
Okay.
It was sort of.
All right.
Four thousand something.
And we are, we're fully operational and have all the lifeguards that we need for all of our city pools this year, correct?
We only have one city pool. We operate.
That's.
That's at Coolidge.
Okay.
And currently, no, we are not fully staffed with lifeguards. We have, the two head lifeguards are full. We're, we posted for eight lifeguard positions. We have four, four lifeguards with two interviews scheduled for Friday to bring it up to six, and two more people actually applied today. Depending on how those go, we should be well on our way to being fully staffed. And the mayor and Commissioner Erickson, we've talked about some other options that can provide a little bit of relief to ensure that the pool stays open more, have more supervision of a larger area.
Even if we aren't able to get?
Even if we aren't able to get full staff.
Okay. So the pool is operational and ready to go?
Um, we're, well, it's.
In process.
In process. Right now, there's, this is a very busy time. Obviously, springtime, when it rains and when the sun comes out and it's nice out, the grass grows. So with 46 pieces of property to, to cut the grass, we're working on trying to do that, trying to open the pool. In the midst of that, getting C-Click fixes of lobster dinners left trash outside of one park, or people leaving their living room set at another park, or tires being left at another park. The guys get constantly, pretty much on a daily basis, pulled away to clean up after people leave their things all over the place. So in a perfect world, if that stuff's not done, more attention can be paid to the grass being mowed and the pool being attended to on a daily basis.
All right. Thank you. I commend your effort. I think you've done a wonderful job with the Recreation Department. So thank you for that, for the commitment back to our residents.
Thank you.
Vice President Van Hazen.
Thank you. So we're talking about the pool. What is the anticipated pool season? When will it be open? Like, what date, what portion of the summer?
The same as last year, last week of June.
I'm sorry?
The same as last year, the last week of June weekend on opening the pool.
So last week of June, and when is it scheduled to close?
Until the kids have to go back to school. So last year, we stayed open longer than any other pool in the state.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to get a gauge of how, how long it's going to be open. So last week of June to?
When the kids are back to, so if I have staff.
So is that September? Is that, can you give me a date?
A specific date? August 31st.
August 31st, okay. And last year, I'm just comparing the budgeted expenses versus last year, what, was it open the full amount last year or what?
It was not.
When was it open last year?
July 17th it opened.
July 17th?
Or July 18th, 19th, somewhere in that timeframe. And we stayed open till the third week of August, when we only had one lifeguard left because all the other people went back to college or high school.
Okay. So mid-July, so the delay partially accounts for the increase in the budget. So it looks like lifeguards are going up $45,000.
To have, last year, we weren't fully staffed that lifeguards either.
So it's a combination of fully staffing, it's intended, the pool's going to be open for a longer period of time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the, the summer recreation program. That was a new program last year that started. Looks like you're hoping to expand staffing, come fully staffed there. What was the, can you give us an idea of what the participation was?
Last year, on a weekly average between the two sites, there was probably anywhere between 35 to 50 kids in total. Over the whole summer, we serviced about 80 to 100 in total.
80 to 100 in total. And that was open, you said, the whole summer from end of school to start of school?
That is no, that is not correct. The summer program runs for six weeks, the week, the week after the 4th of July through the third week of August.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hesep.
Just one thing to add. The enrollment in the summer programs actually increased week over week, just based on the positive experiences that the kids, kids had. They would go home to their, their neighborhoods and then, you know, tell their neighborhood children about it. And we actually saw significant enrollment change from start of those programs through the end of the programs.
That's great. Thank you.
And actually, to add one more piece of that, even though we did charge a $50 very nominal fee for the program, around 70% of the fees were either waived or partial payment.
Further questions? For the Parks and Rec Department. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would ask about dues and subscriptions, but I don't see any, so.
There are associations that James belongs to. I think it's the Mass Association of Parks and Rec.
Yeah, there, there are a couple of associations that I do belong to. The Massachusetts Parks and Recreation Association, which, as part of that association, we were awarded an actual award this year for an activity that we did in actual, actually the National Parks and Recreation Association, which both organizations and other organizations that we are a part of do provide a lot of opportunities to obtain grant funding, which normally wouldn't be available to people that are not part of those organizations.
Very nice. I don't at all want it to seem that my comment about I don't see any was intended as a DGA credentials or anything. More just that I didn't see a line item for it, so I wasn't going to ask. But, but no, I'm, I'm glad.
Understood.
I think we just have water and wastewater remaining.
We do. So I can make a couple of general comments about water and wastewater. The, the projects currently underway in both enterprise funds were included, are, in, in this budget, were funded through last year's tax rate. The rate study model is continually being updated as the commissioners reprioritize projects, and they're making sure that they're still on track to stay within the rates. Some projects originally contemplated of being pushed out to focus on wrapping up the water main projects by the end of 2025. I want to add that both water and wastewater have increased their reimbursement to the city for indirect costs, which has helped to balance the general fund side of the budget, and mainly due to increase in employee expenses such as health insurance. So they, they've made that contribution to the budget deficit.
I have just one. On page 46, second line, what is driving the large jump in watershed maintenance?
The title is kind of misleading. It did just include watershed maintenance, mowing or things like that. But including when the rate study was work on the dams. So it's watershed maintenance and dams, actually. So we funded some, some engineering and things like that to kind of move these projects along, which we haven't done in a number of years, so that we can set us up for grants and things like that, or at least get an idea of, you know, what we're facing. The Water Division alone is responsible for 16 dams, and, you know, some of them are, you know, certainly need some repairs. So that's what that increase is for.
Yeah, if, if you're going from, you know, maintenance of lawns to maintenance of lawns and dams, I can see why it's going up that much.
It was kind of a catch-all for anything we did in the watershed, and mainly it was related to dams.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Bochman?
Page 45. Can you tell me what a business manager is?
Courtney.
Courtney again?
It's all her fault.
All right.
So the, the Water Enterprise Fund pays for 25% of Courtney's salary, and the Wastewater Enterprise Fund pays for a percentage, and then the DPW General Fund pays for the remaining percentage. So it's split three ways right there.
All right. And then my question, Anthony asked one of them because I had put down a why here. The first one on page 46, Contract Services. The first one on page forty-six, contract services, could you explain that to me?
So that's police details. We've actually reduced it down because it's kind of a catch-all for those type of things. Police details, trying to think of some other stuff. If there's work that needs to be done in the plants or something like that, you know, sometimes it's funded under that line item, so.
Door repairs.
Yeah, miscellaneous small things that doesn't fall under a big, you know, a larger contract or engineering, so.
Now, I see your pavement and coal patching material went up from forty thousand to sixty thousand, a twenty thousand, a twenty thousand increase. Is there, is there a big reason why you went that high? I mean, you had a couple of water main breaks on.
Yeah, I mean, they add up to quite a bit, you know, the repairs and things like that, so we want to make sure that we do a good job repairing any damage that we do to city street while we don't do what our water mains do, so, you know, so we try to make sure that we cover that, and of course, pavement costs are up, so. And we, I think we've done, the Water Department, you know, I'm kind of proud of the fact that the last few years, I would say probably five to seven years ago, we didn't do that well with patching and things like that and pavement, trench restoration, so we've improved upon that. A lot of times, we cut out a lot more just to make sure that we, you know, if there is a pothole that the mayor wants to get rid of next to it, we'll get rid of that there, too, so.
That's nice of you.
But no, we like to, you know, if we're cutting something out and we see additional stuff, so it takes additional, but if we're working there anyway, and we can make some additional repairs and cut out a larger area, you know, even beyond our trench, a couple feet, then we do that, but it does add up, so.
All right.
Say, a good example of that was the water main break out in front of Slatteries a couple of years ago. Water Department made a pretty substantial repair there that encompassed an area larger than the water main break itself, just because of the condition of the road there.
Yeah, I know, it was very cool. I thought it was down at Waylon Park, boom, boom, boom.
Yeah, it was that part that was from us, but also beyond, there was some, you know, pavement that was starting to fail, so we went through, I mean, we had, you know, the equipment there, we're paying quite a bit just to have the contractor there, so we went the additional distance just to make sure that, you know, we did our part in improving the city road.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Further questions for the Water Department? All right, all good.
All right.
Thank you, John.
Less, but not least.
That's my favorite.
Most important. The last the people think of when they flush the toilet.
The most expensive.
But the most important. In the most expensive.
We'll move on to wastewater. Mr. McNamara has pointed out that this is a lower budget than last year, and they still maintain a very strong retained earnings balance. There is going to be a use of two-point-four million dollars this year in retained earnings, but that still leaves somewhere, I think, about five million dollars. The, when you turn over on page forty-six to the overtime, I think that the explanation for that increase is that because of difficulty in hiring mandatory staff, there is a, I guess there is a temporary vacancy and also the anticipation of a retirement, so they're allowing for those overtime costs that will be associated with that. And then in general, I think in the expense side, it's, the increase is basically just due to inflationary costs of, you know, chemicals and supplies.
Yeah, just to say a little bit, the wastewater budget for the past few years has always been revolving around our consent decree. And it needs to be reminded that that's only four and a half years away for us to meet that deadline, it's 2030. I just thought of it the other day, I was like, wow, that's less than five years, and we still have a lot of work to do. So the wastewater budgets for the past few years are principally designed to meet that goal, and so we really don't have any, you know, extra stuff, it's just always geared towards meeting our consent decree and working with the DEP so that we can, you know, get through this.
Questions, Counselor Boishman?
Page forty-nine. Sledge disposal, going up over a hundred thousand, going from the air plant to the dump.
Sledge disposal is the trucking fees.
Yeah.
It's level funded from last year to this year. We're bringing a little bit less sledge than we have years ago, but there's always a chance that we're going to bring more. It depends on how much sledge we develop during the year, and that's always varies depending on the slow and, I mean, on the flow, and then how much septic we get also. So that line item is for the trucking fees.
Yeah, I understand that, but you said level funded.
Counselor, the increase you're seeing is from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four, not FY twenty-four to twenty-five?
All right. How are we going on twenty-five, right?
Just to add to that, long-term, if we're able to move forward with the anaerobic digestion project at the West Wastewater Treatment Facility, that sledge disposal line item will change drastically.
Yes.
Because we'll be sending our residuals to that facility instead of to the dump, and we'll be making money off of that facility instead of spending money hauling that material to the dump.
What's the software?
We use various softwares throughout the wastewater division. The treatment plant has license fees we have to pay for the skater system, the reporting system we use to record all the lab. We also have software that records the meters and all the sewers. So we made our own line item there so that we can, you know, it used to come out of individual budgets before, now we have a strict line item for that. But that's the yearly cost for all the software that we use.
And that's the reason why you don't see any expenditures in prior fiscal years, is because that is a new line item, so we can break that cost out separately and try to track it a little bit more tightly.
Now, what about the page fifty? Car replacement and vehicle replacements are up to a hundred and seventy-five, going up a hundred grand?
We have a vehicle, it's called the box truck, it's the camera van. The camera van is, is getting beat up and old. What the camera does is it goes down the sewer line.
Yeah.
And we see what's in there. It's nearing the end of its life expectancy, and so we put a line item in there because it could possibly fail next year, so we want to make sure that we have something in case that happens.
All right. And my final question would be, because I got these all cut here, that's why I'm writing these questions, collection system repair.
Yeah, the collection system repair, we, last year, we experienced two big, totally unknown problems that, one was Birch Brook, where we had a sewer line that had to be repaired, it was going underneath Birch Brook. That was quite substantial, and there was also another one leaning down from the landfill that we had to repair. Both of those came, they were unexpected emergency repairs. We didn't have money in the budget for that last year, and so we put money in there just in case something like that happens again.
All right, oh, okay. That's good enough for me for now.
All right, any other questions for wastewater? All right, in that case, unless the mayor or the finance team would like to say any concluding words, that concludes our agenda for this evening, and I will, do you have anything? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and seconds. I am not going to bother taking this by roll call vote. If someone wants to say we improperly adjourned, so be it. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.